Good morning. I'm Danielle McCray. I'm the councilwoman for the 2nd District, also the chairwoman for this committee, which is a Budget and Appropriation Committee. Today, joining us, we have Council President Z. Cohen. We have committee members, our vice president, Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, and also Councilman Paris Gray from the 8th District. Other council members who have joined is going to be Councilwoman Ramos from the 14th District. We do have several representatives from the mayor's office, as well as the City Council President's Office, and our committee staff person, Marguerite Karen. There are two legislative oversight hearings on the agenda today. We're going to begin with Legislative Oversight 25-0001, Budget Briefance, for the purpose of calling on representatives from the Finance Department's Bureau of Budget and Management Research, the Department of Planning, and Baltimore City Public Schools to provide a briefing to the City Council on the financial performance and level of spending against the approved budgets. At this time, I'm going to open up the floor to Council President Cohen, if he has any opening remarks before we get started.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the committee members on this committee. I want to also thank Director Larson, who's been working really closely with our staff, as well as Chairwoman McCray. I also want to thank my staff that's here, Dexter and Michael and all the other folks. This is important that we engage this conversation early and that we all square up and are on the same page, as we know that our state is facing some significant fiscal challenges, and Baltimore is the economic engine of Maryland. And so it is critically important that we do well, so that the rest of our state can do well as well. So again, just want to thank the Chair for her leadership and all the folks who are here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, President Cohen. We're going to move directly into our presentations. We do have a number of them. The presentations were sent over ahead of time, so if you can just hit your main points that you have, and then we'll go off with questions. And we're going to start with the Bureau of Budget and Management Research. And please just provide your name, as well as just the agency you're representing before you start. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Laura Larson. I'm the city's budget director. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you today. Today, we are going to provide just a final update of the preliminary year-end position for fiscal '24, as well as our first quarter projections for fiscal '25. I'm joined today by our Deputy Budget Director Ben Brosh and our Assistant Budget Director Pedro O'Ponte. I'm so happy to answer any questions on these items. So I'll begin by talking about fiscal '24, and then we'll switch gears and talk a little bit about where we are in the current fiscal year. So fiscal '24, again, that's the year that was July 1st, 2023, through June 30th of 2024. We had previously reported to the council based off of some of our preliminary and unaudited statements that the city was expecting a $58.3 million overall surplus last year. As part of the additional closeout activities that happened following that briefing in October, the actual year-end position is currently is a $46 million surplus. I do want to stress that our colleagues in the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services are still continuing their year-end process and still working through the city's audit. And so these numbers may shift just as we complete the audit process. But in general, when we look at the city's overall general fund, we see that there is continued strength on the revenue side. We ended with a $77 million revenue surplus. That was about a 3.5 percentage variance. And that strength on the revenue side is helping to absorb deficits on the expenditure side. We ended fiscal '24 with a $30.9 million deficit, or just under a 1 percentage variance. In terms of the change in the numbers between what we had previously reported and what we are reporting today, the primary change was related to a late water billing from the Department of Public Works. There was a reconciliation that the Department of Public Works was going through, in which they had identified that they had not properly charged the city for its water usage at our various locations. And so those final entries were made as part of the closeout process. The general fund impact of all of those entries was about $12.2 million. So that's the most material thing that changed between our initial report and what I'm sharing with you today. Again, work on the closeout process is continuing, and the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services is aiming to have the city's ACFOR completed later this winter. Just quickly, in terms of what is happening on the revenue side, our, the final year-end projection was driven by strength on the property tax. That was driven by improvements in the final collection rates in the fourth quarter. On the income tax, we receive a large final dispersment from the state of Maryland in the fourth quarter. And so our final allocation from the state was higher than what we previously projected, and that was due to some of their year-end reconciliation efforts. And then finally, highway user revenue was consistent with our prior projections, where we were anticipating a surplus for that revenue stream. That surplus revenue was actually allocated as part of the '25 budget, where we increased the capital contribution for DOT capital projects in the current year budget. And then interest earnings were higher than originally forecast, mainly driven by the ongoing impact of higher interest rates. I won't go through that. This just puts the overall projection in terms of major variances and perspective. You can see income tax and investment earnings were really the driver of last year's surplus. In addition to those surplus revenue streams, some of the items that ended the year in deficit was our cable and franchise fee. That is driven by fewer city residents having cable and a fewer number of subscribers. Telecom, that's driven by cellphone connections, and so we're seeing an overall reduction in the number of cellphone accounts that are held by city residents. And then finally, red light camera revenue is down by about $3 million. What we're seeing in terms of red light cameras is that the average number of citations per camera are down. We believe that that is due to the fact that people are used to where they are, and so they've altered their behavior in those intersections. So again, that is what's happening on the revenue side. Let's talk for a second about what's happening on the expenditure side. So we had a overall surplus in terms of the city's debt service payments. That ended the year with about a $20 million surplus. Again, that was related to some final year-end transactions associated with the city's debt portfolio. I discussed the issue with the late water charges. Again, that, these final charges that were booked to city agencies actually represented multiple fiscal years of water charges. And then one note is, in the fourth quarter, the final deficit was actually lower than what we had been forecasting throughout fiscal 2024, because we saw that spending in a number of city agencies had actually slowed in the fourth quarter, driving down the final year-end deficit. We spent a lot of time last year talking about vacancies. We continue to think about vacancies in terms of critical positions in the city's workforce. Throughout fiscal '24, there was an overall 10% decline in vacancies citywide, although that looks a little different based off of different city agencies. We actually saw the number of sworn vacancies increase year over year by about 7.3%, and we saw the number of civilian vacancies actually declined by almost 19%. As it pertains to fiscal '24, there were two packages of closeout legislation that either came or are getting ready to come before the City Council and this committee. The first item is related to deficit agencies, and I'll talk more about that in a second. But Item B is a, was a fund balance appropriation to appropriate $53.8 million in fund balance for fiscal '25. That was approved by the Board of Estimates and the prior City Council in the fall. And so those appropriations have been recorded, and agencies are spending against that. That $53.8 million, a large portion of that represents procurement activity that straddles multiple fiscal years. So there was a contract that was started last year, but there are still invoices that have to be paid in fiscal 2025. And so that is, that's what's making that up. All of those items are one-tieing items and are not recurring in the city's budget. But backing up to the deficit agencies, so there's an item on tomorrow's Board of Estimates agenda, and for a package of supplemental appropriations that would, that are intended to rectify the agencies that ended the year in deficit in fiscal '24. The city's charter requires that all city agencies end the year in balance, and so this will be a retroactive supplemental back to fiscal '24. So the overall net impact of that package of legislation is $51.2 million. That's made up of a couple of different components. We are recommending to appropriate surplus revenue, specifically from income tax and investment earnings, for a variety of city agencies. We're also recommending to appropriate $5.3 million from fund balance, associated with the final round of COVID expenditures that our Health Department experienced in fiscal '24, as we were wrapping up our FEMA reimbursement. And then we're also proposing to transfer about $17.3 million in surplus appropriations from our debt service appropriations and the Department of General Services to deficit agencies. So those agencies that ended the year in deficit that are subject to this year-end supplemental, first is Board of Elections. So we are recommending a $1.4 million supplemental to be funded by income tax surplus. This is primarily driven to election costs in fiscal '24 that were higher than what we had budgeted. This included an expansion of early voting. The Department of Finance ended the year with a $4.2 million deficit, so we're recommending to transfer surplus appropriation from debt service. This is primarily driven by unbudgeted contractual support for the city's payroll processing, as well as the finance project management function, which oversees the major systems utilized by Finance, including Workday and some of our revenue collection systems. The Fire Department ended the year with a $33.4 million deficit. We are recommending to rectify that deficit by appropriating surplus investment earnings. This deficit was driven by overtime costs, specifically driven by a high number of vacancies in the EMS operations for the Fire Department, as well as the use of unbudgeted contractual support for EMS calls. The Health Department ended the year with a $5.3 million deficit. This is where we're recommending to appropriate fund balance. Again, these, this deficit was related to the final round of invoicing that was coming in for the Health Department's activities related to the COVID response. Those expenditures, the city is getting reimbursed from FEMA, and we're in the final process of receiving those reimbursements from FEMA for those costs. The Law Department ended the year with a $1.5 million deficit, so we're recommending to transfer a surplus from the Department of General Services. This deficit was caused by higher-than-budgeted staffing costs. The Liquor License Board ended the year with a $300,000 deficit, so we're recommending to appropriate surplus income tax. This deficit was related to an unbudgeted move in space costs. The Police Department ended the year with a $3.1 million deficit. This was driven by overtime costs and leave payouts for staff within the Police Department. Next up is the Department of Public Works. They ended the year with a $5.6 million deficit, so we're recommending to appropriate surplus income tax. This deficit was driven by equipment costs and overtime for their routine operations. Rec and Parks ended the year with a $3.7 million deficit, so we're recommending to appropriate surplus income tax. This deficit was driven primarily by overtime costs and contractual costs, specifically in urban forestry. The Sheriff's Office ended the year with a $4.5 million deficit, so we're recommending to appropriate, or transfer surplus debt service appropriation. This deficit was driven by higher-than-budgeted overtime costs, as well as unbudgeted purchasing activity. And then finally, the Department of Transportation ended the year with approximately, with a deficit of approximately $600,000, and we're recommending to transfer surplus debt service appropriation. This is primarily driven by capital chargeback costs that were not realized in fiscal '24. Chairwoman McCray, would you like me to pause for questions on '24, or would you like me to do the '25 presentation?
We're going to pause right here, and then we'll get into '20, '25. I'm going to start, and also just want to make sure that we announce our Vice Chair, Councilman Schleifer, who has joined us today. I'm going to start, just seeing if our Council President has any questions at this time regarding this presentation.
Just out of curiosity, how does our '24 compare to other jurisdictions in the surrounding area, if you have a sense? Director Larson?
I have not gone through and looked at how our other major jurisdictions ended the year in terms of their budget actual. What I can, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to get too far out of, over my skis here, but I would venture to guess that some of the cost pressures that we're seeing on the expenditure side are not unlike what our colleagues in other jurisdictions are seeing. And so I would, I would think that, you know, they're dealing with the same types of turnover and vacancy levels, especially in public safety. And so I would see that, I could foresee that they would potentially be seeing some of the overtime cost pressure that we are. I think our deficits in Public Works, specifically around our solid waste operations, are probably an outlier compared to some of the other jurisdictions, just because the nature of providing those solid waste services in the city of Baltimore is much more complicated than in some of the surrounding jurisdictions, where it's a suburban, more spread-out community. You know, there's also, we're doing this with in-house crews, a number of those jurisdictions are doing that, providing that service with contractual crews, so the costs are, you know, the cost variability is a little bit different. I would say on the, on the revenue side, you know, just keeping in context that the property tax and income tax represent almost 2/3 of our overall revenue. We know that the, we are seeing great strength in those two revenue sources here in the city, but we know that our growth is smaller than some of the other jurisdictions. So, for example, if we look at the assessment increases for this year that we just received, the property tax assessment increases for the city of Baltimore are less than, are much, are towards the lower end of all the statewide increases. So what I would venture to guess is that those jurisdictions, you know, are seeing the same strength that we are from the revenue side, specifically in their property and income tax, that would help them to sort of navigate some of this expenditure volatility.
And are we starting to feel the downward pressure from the state's fiscal challenges? Have you, I'm sure we've done some analysis on what the picture looks like for us specifically from the state, and obviously, it's in play right now, given that they're in session, but I'm curious what it looks like from a Baltimore perspective, to have the state facing a, up to $3 billion deficit?
Certainly. We've had the opportunity to analyze the governor's proposed budget, and there are a number of items in there where the state is proposing to pass on expenditures down to the local jurisdiction, so that will add to our projected deficit for fiscal '26. Some of the major items where they're doing that is related to teacher pension costs. So currently, the city of Baltimore receives a grant from the state of Maryland to help offset those pension costs. That grant is being phased out over a two-year period, so that's about a $5 million hurt for fiscal '26. The other item that is happening in the governor's budget is that local jurisdictions, starting in fiscal '26, will have to start making a contribution into the state pension system for those teacher retirement costs. And so in fiscal '20, that's a brand-new cost that we don't have today. That's going to be $8.8 million next year. The other large item is related to ESTAT, so that's the state department that does all of our property assessments. Right now, we have a cost-sharing agreement where the state pays for 90% of those costs, and the city pays for 10%. That's consistent with all the local jurisdictions. In the governor's budget, they're switching that to a 50-50 cost share, so that's about a 2, just over a $2 million impact for fiscal '26. And then the other piece is related to the governor's income tax proposal. Now, that actually has a positive, if that, if his new income tax structure is implemented, that will actually have a positive impact on city income tax receipts, because the net impact between increasing the itemized deduction and then, or, I'm sorry, eliminating itemized deduction, but increasing the standard deduction, the net impact of those things would be additional income tax revenue. Pedro and Ben, I want to say that we estimated the total impact of these items, remind me, I have a lot of numbers floating in my head, 12 million? Or it's in the slides from yesterday? Seven million, so the net impact of all those things for '26 is $7 million approximately, based off the governor's proposed budget.
Seven million less than?
It would be a $7 million hurt to our fiscal '26 outlook.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. As you shared within the slide, obviously, the revenues for property tax are higher, and you stated why, because of the projection, it was driven by improvements in the collection rates. Can you just share the prior collection rate and our current collection rate?
Yes. So the, we've always hovered about 97% in terms of the overall collection rate. We have seen in recent years that that number has trended down slightly. We've never gotten below, I'm looking at Pedro, 95%. And so when, in fiscal 2024, we had in our third-quarter projections, based off of where collections were at that point, we were trending down. But in the fourth quarter, based off of the final collections that we saw, we were closer to that 97%, which is the historical rate.
Could you guys furnish, could you departments furnish the exact numbers for the current collection rate? I know you said that you were close to the 97, but...
Do you have the actual collection rate offhand? Okay. We can provide that as a follow-up.
Great. I want to move just into income tax before I ask the other committee members for their questions. Typically, our income tax dispersments, they consistently exceed projections. And I guess my question would be, does that suggest that the city's projection methods are too conservative?
So this is an area, I think this is an area where we are sort of beholden to the data that we have access to in order to project. So when it comes to income tax, that is collected by the state of Maryland, and then dispersed periodically to local jurisdictions throughout the fiscal year, and then there's these large reconciliations at the end of the year. What has been a challenge in terms of what has driven the ups and downs with income tax in recent years is that final reconciliation, and that was what was driving the surplus in fiscal '24. Now, what we're seeing with that final reconciliation is, what the state does is they look at the uncollected balance that is left over for income tax receipts, and then they allocate that out to local jurisdictions. Last year, there was a sizable piece of uncollected that was available to be redistributed back to the local jurisdictions. And I would, that is, that piece is very variable. In some years, it can be, there's, we receive a high reconciliation, and in some years, we receive very little. But that's not anything where we're going to receive sort of regular data throughout the fiscal year to try to know where that, where that number is going to land, because all of that data resides with the state comptroller's office. We do participate in monthly calls through Mako with the partner jurisdictions and their budget and finance teams, and there's frequent communication with the state comptroller's office to help with that data sharing. But again, I think it's that final reconciliation piece that drives the up and down.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to open up the floor to committee members for questions at this time. Vice President Middleton?
Since we're on the subject of reconciliation, let's talk a little bit about DPW and the water charges. And there's always been an issue, I guess, in the past fiscal years of unreconciliated water charges. And we, as representatives, get consistent, you know, it's, it's monthly of the problems with our, with water bills and the, and the excess charges, just over and over. And we have to really start paying attention, and I just need to know, are there steps in place for future years, or, because it's, it's getting worse? And it's affecting the total summary, really, of our budget.
Certainly, and this was, this was an issue that, you know, we pushed hard with our colleagues in the Department of Public Works to fully understand. I will say, you know, I'm not the expert in terms of the collection processes and the billing processes, and so, you know, our colleagues in the Department of Public Works could speak more directly about what they're doing to tighten this up. What I know to be the case with what happened with the city's accounts was that for two years, they, the billing system that they use, it's called UMAX, they, the bills get generated, and there are these essentially like holding accounts, where they have the different balances for the accounts. And that UMAX system wasn't reconciled in order to actually initiate the bills for all these city accounts. And so DPW, as part of the closeout actions for fiscal '24, was able to complete that reconciliation effort and brought these charges to the city's accounting team in BAPS, and indicated that they needed to be booked. This was something that we, of course, identified in fiscal '23, because we saw large surpluses in agencies that received large water bills, because they weren't charged in fiscal '23. What I can say is that in terms of what's happening on the DPW side moving forward, is that they are working to reconcile this account on a quarterly basis, and we're able to better monitor where they are in actually charging the city accounts.
Thank you. I'd like to request, since they're going billing quarterly, if we can get on the quarterly at all?
On the water billing? Okay. And what I can be prepared to do is speak, when we talk about the second-quarter numbers, we can speak specifically about what we're seeing on the water billing side. But what I might suggest is that we could also bring colleagues from the Department of Public Works, so that they could speak to what they're doing on the utility side. Would that work?
And then my second question, agencies spending. Are there any planned agreements on how purchasing, purchasing is managed for reducing?
Yeah. I will say fiscal 2024 is a, is a bit of a unique year, or what I'll call a stabilizing year. So if we think about the city's Workday system, that went live at the beginning of fiscal '23, and then fiscal '24 would have been the first full cycle in the new system. And so part of some of these deficits that we was, that we see from purchasing activity in fiscal 2024 is caused by the backlogs from procurement in fiscal '23 that carried into '24. So there were a number of major procurements that had started in '23, kind of got stuck in that backlog, and got cleared up and moved through the process in '24. So that's why we saw sort of more purchasing activity, or sort of more unbudgeted purchasing activity than we would normally see. I also think in, in these first two years of Workday, visibility for... I also think in, in these first two years of Workday, visibility for city agencies around their budget to actual performance was, was murky. And so, what we've been working on with our colleagues throughout Finance is to make it easier for people to track, to better track and understand where they are in terms of their budget to actual performance, and we're all getting better at that as everyone's getting used to our new way of seeing data and consuming the data and the reporting, and et cetera. So, we are seeing that some of that is slowing down. I'm also, I've also been working in coordination with Adam Manning, our procurement director, to look at how we handle setting up multi-year contracts that span multiple fiscal years to ensure that agencies don't overs, even if they have a, even if they have approval for a three-year contract, that they're only spending up to what they have budgeted in that year one. And so, that's part of the procurement transformation efforts that, that Adam and his team are leading. And so, we are definitely seeing improvement on those sides. One of the other things that we're really leaning into, into is that strengthening the controls. So, where we see that agencies are over budget, you know, instituting higher levels of review or oversight in terms of their spending, and having them implement different cost controls to ensure that they were minimizing these expenditure deficits.
Thank you for those details. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman, did you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question of the budget with expenditures. There's a $2.1 million in actual expenditures that is not attributed to any agency at the bottom of the spreadsheet, which is, can you provide us with the details of what agencies incurred that amount?
That was related to unreconciled purchasing card activity. So, agencies have purchasing cards, and you have to go through and reconcile them in order to associate those transactions with the correct account information, and that was the balance of purchasing card activity that wasn't reconciled or attributed to a specific city agency. That's been another area where our procurement director, Adam Manning, has really stepped up his team's oversight with really, with relation to procurement card, or with P-card activity. In, in fiscal 2024, they started the practice, and it's continued into fiscal '25, they've started the practice that if your P-card is not reconciled, it gets, every month, it gets shut off. And so, we should not see that sort of, we should not see that sort of unreconciled balance moving forward.
Okay. And then, my second question is, how did BBMR arrive at the revised budget? After looking at the supplements and legisstar, I couldn't find those amounts except for BOPA.
So, in terms of the revised budget figures, between '24 adopted and '24 revised, there was a carryforward that only required BOE approval, and so, that made up the bulk of the increase year over year. And I can provide you the, the BOE file that implemented the carryforward from last year.
All right. Can I make that a committee request?
Yep.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman, can you restate your request for us again, please?
Yes. Could you please just provide us with the, with the revised budget for what we need, like the supplements?
Yeah, the FY '24, the Board of Estimates memo that authorized those FY '24 carryforwards.
Exactly.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm going to close this out, then we're going to get to your, your next presentation. I just have a few questions about the vacancy trends. What specific agencies saw the largest reduction within the civilian vacancies that was at 18.9%?
The biggest agency would have been the Department of Public Works, because fiscal '24 captured the hiring of additional crews in order to stabilize our solid waste operations. And so, I don't have the exact figures directly in front of me, but they saw the, you know, they went from a double-digit vacancy rate to under, to under 5% throughout the course of fiscal '24. But I can, I can provide those exact numbers for you as a follow-up.
And can you also just provide a breakdown of the 7.3 increase within sworn vacancies by agency?
Yeah, so that's just police and fire, and the bulk of the increase is going to be on the police side.
Okay, we're going to get into your first quarter projections presentation.
Great. Wonderful. Okay, switching gears, current fiscal year. This is the time of year where we're operating in three fiscal years, last year, current year, and next year, so lots of numbers flying around. So, fiscal '25 first quarter, this reflected data from July 1st to September 30th. In terms of second quarter, we are working on finalizing our second quarter projections internally, so we'll be able to report those back to the committee very soon as well. First quarter, we are projecting a $14.4 million deficit overall. What we are seeing so far, based off of current data in fiscal '25, is that we continue to have revenue surpluses, but compared to last year where we were, ended the year with a $77 million revenue surplus, this year, we're only projecting a $10 million surplus, so about a 0.4% variance. On the expenditure side, we're projecting about a $25.4 million deficit. That's about, just over 1% variance compared to budget. So, let's look at these numbers first on the revenue side. So, as I mentioned, we have a $10 million surplus. So, some of the numbers that are making this, some of the biggest variations here are income tax, our transfer and recrodation tax, moving violations, and then parking revenues. So, in terms of income tax, as of the first quarter, we were projecting a $12.8 million surplus. One of the things that's important to note when it comes to income tax in the first quarter is that, at the end of the first quarter, we didn't actually have any disbursements from the state. So, the only data we had to base our first quarter on is the final transactions that we had through the end of fiscal 2024. Again, the, the driver here was what we were seeing in terms of that final reconciliation that drove up the surplus in fiscal '24. Transfer and recrodation taxes, we're projecting a $4.3 million surplus. What we are projecting here is that there will be, that the actual increase that we've seen in property values and, and values that are being sold specifically on the residential side are higher than what we had assumed in the budget. The other thing to note is that transfer and recrodation taxes are also tied, not only tied to when property changes hands, but when people are refinancing property. And so, what we're assuming here is that we're going to see this start to tick up as interest rates continue to come down, because individuals who had purchased their homes at higher interest rates may be coming back into the market to try to get a lower interest rate. Moving violations are projected to have a $3.1 million deficit. That's a continuation of what we saw in fiscal '24. Again, what we're seeing is that we're, the lower number of citations per red light camera. The other thing that happened, that we had factored into the '25 budget was that there would be additional red light cameras deployed, and there was a delay in terms of when those cameras were actually deployed, which is impacting revenue for fiscal '25. And then finally, parking-related revenues are projected to have a $5.9 million deficit. That's being driven by a reduction in the number of citations that are being issued by the Department of Transportation, as well as underperforming parking meter revenue that is tied to the upgrade and repair of different equipment. So, this just shows those numbers summarized into different revenue categories. And then this, this slide just shows you that data slightly differently in terms of looking at material increases and decreases. So, again, our surplus is really coming from two sources, income taxes and transfer and recrodation. Our deficits are coming, you know, specifically, we've got the camera violations that I just mentioned, and the parking. Interest earnings are, are coming in slightly lower than budget. If you recall, we took interest earnings up quite a bit in the '25 budget. Again, that number is, it is, moves as we get additional data, we're able to kind of refine that projection. And then library services, that's a payment that comes from the state. So, let's talk a little bit more about some of these surpluses. Income tax, like I said, a $12.7 million surplus. As I mentioned, the, this projection is based off of what we were able to see in the fiscal '24 actuals. Overall, state collections of income taxes were up by 4.5%, so that was driving up the city disbursement, which is contributing to the surplus. Transfer and recrodation taxes, as I mentioned, $4.3 million deficit. The number of units being sold are down year over year through the third quarter, so down by about 3.6%, but the, the value of those transactions is higher. So, in fiscal '24 through the first quarter, the average sale price of property was $245,000 compared to $264,000 through the first quarter of fiscal '25. Now, on to the deficits. Investment earnings, so we're projecting about a $2.3 million deficit here. What's happening here is that we are, we have an overall drop in the number, in the total amount of cash on hand. That is driven by ARPA expenditures. So, if you recall, the city got $641 million in ARPA. We received that in two tranches from the Treasury Department, and so, we were able to use that cash balance as part of our short-term cash investments. As those ARPA dollars are getting out the door, in line with the, the timing deadlines for those items, we are seeing that the cash on hand is, is coming down. So, the cash on hand coming down in conjunction with what the Federal, Fed Reserve is doing on income tax rate, or interest earnings, is what's driving this projection. Traffic camera violations, as I mentioned, a $3.1 million deficit. There were, the, the biggest item here is that there were 24 new red light cameras that were slated to be deployed last spring. The implementation of those got delayed into, into the second quarter of this year, and so, we had fewer cameras than what the budget assumed. And then we're also seeing that specifically on red light cameras, there's, the overall number of citations per camera are coming down. Now, red light cameras are different than speed cameras, so some of you might recall, a couple of years ago, we talked about speed camera redeployment to move them to different parts of our city where we could improve pedestrian safety and traffic safety outcomes. Our red light cameras are not able, able to be easily redeployed. So, if someone's used to there being a red light camera at this specific intersection, it's cost prohibitive for the city to remove that infrastructure and move it to a different intersection. So, when you think about our traffic camera program, speed cameras are a little bit more mobile, and red light cameras are more stationary in terms of, of where we locate them. Parking-related revenues, as I mentioned, about a $6 million deficit. The overall number of citations were down, through the first quarter, were down by about 18%. And if you'll recall, as part of the '25 budget balancing actions, we had a number of initiatives where we were assuming additional, additional parking-related revenues, and some of the actual trends associated with those actions are coming in lower than what we had assumed. So, we turned back on the parking, the late fees for parking citations. Those had been turned off since the COVID pandemic. The actual revenue that we were realizing from turning those late fees back on is lower than what we had assumed in the budget. And then again, metered, metered revenue was down by about $1.2 million. A couple of initiatives that are underway to, to reverse this, the Department of Transportation has done a lot of hiring. I believe they've brought on 27 positions in this area and are focused on ramping back up the enforcement activities. There is also the pilot that's underway regarding the license plate reader technology that would allow, that would improve enforcement of the residential parking permit program. So, that technology has been secured, and that pilot will get underway in the second half of the year. So, this is a number that we're closely monitoring to see if we can make up some ground as we move through fiscal '25. So, let's switch gears and talk about the expenditures. In, overall, we're projecting about a $25.4 million deficit in terms of expenditure costs. $19 million of that is coming from staff costs. This is mostly coming from overtime, and we're seeing this not only in police and fire, but in some of our other frontline operational agencies like transportation, public works, and parks. The other contributor to the deficit is what we call transfer credits. So, some agency budgets have these assumed chargebacks to other funds. So, let's think about the Department of Transportation. They have a, they have staff within their operation that spend time working on capital projects. So, the budget includes these credits to reflect this staff time that they'll charge back to the capital budget. What we're finding in that, in a lot of our larger agencies is that those chargebacks are not actually being realized. And then we also are seeing a deficit related to contractual professional services. So, we have certain areas of the city that are utilizing outside contractors to backfill for either staff shortages or vacancies, and those contracts are not budgeted. So, we see that happening in the Department of Finance, we see it happening in Fire, BSIT, but the sort of, the cumulative impact of that is about $21 million. Now, again, those are the deficits, there are surpluses elsewhere in the agency, but those are the items of concern that we're monitoring for fiscal '25. I'm not going to talk about every agency, just due to time. We have, the slides here sort of categorize agencies into surplus at budget or deficit, and we're comparing the agency's spending to where, how spending was trending in fiscal '24. So, if the green arrow is down, that means their spending is slower than fiscal '24. If it's a sideways yellow arrow, it means their spending is consistent. If it's a red arrow going up, it means they're spending more than fiscal '24. We also provided to the committee a summarize at the agency level for these general fund agencies, the, the raw data for our projection. So, Madam Chair, if it's, if it's okay with you, I'll, I'll skip sort of talking about each of these agencies. But just, just know, you know, we've, we've categorized them into surplus, those agencies at budget, which represents the bulk of the agencies, and then the agencies with projected deficits. By and large, the, the deficit agencies are consistent with the deficit agencies from fiscal '24. So, with that, I can take any questions.
I'm going to get, I want to go to VP Middleton and Vice Chair Slifer, and then I'll come back with mine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one. You had, for the 2.7 million deficit for library services, you said that was pretty much due to state. Could you elaborate on that? Because in the city, we really rely on our library system for other programming and food distribu, you know, it's a lot of things that go on in our libraries. We're in the process of getting a new one built, and one renovated, and I need more information, and...
Certainly. That deficit, and I'm going to turn it over to Pedro to describe in more detail, that represents funding that, reimbursement funding that we receive from the state for a portion of the library services. That doesn't reflect the expenditure side of the library. But I'll, I'll turn it over to Pedro to describe that projection in more detail.
Sure. Good morning, Pedro Ponte, Assistant Board Director. That's been resolved. We had discussion with the library. The library is going to send the money that is, is being established in the budget. The reason for that projection Q1 is that we didn't see the flow of that money coming to, to us, and we elevated to them and said, well, this is an accounting issue. But that's been resolved, we will get roughly $10 million in, in, in what is being projected. You will see that in second quarter projection, yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Vice Chair Slifer.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's quite surprising that the parking enforcement is running at a deficit. There's no shortage of parking and traffic violations out there. Can you tell us specifically in that service, what overtime they have experienced that's contributing to that high dollar of overtime across the board? What what amount is directly related to to traffic enforcement?
I do not have those overtime numbers directly in front of me, but I would be happy to provide that as a as a follow up.
And thank you. And have have you guys also recommended that they seize all overtime in that service being that if they're losing money during their regular daily performance, why would we pay them more money to lose even more money?
Yes. So this has been an area that we have been working with the Department of Transportation in conjunction with the city administrator to more closely monitor overtime spending and to more closely monitor their staffing deployment to understand why there was the drop off in citations and what's being done to see those get back to the the normal trends.
Gotcha. And do you guys collect the data based on the specific code enforcement officer? So that you can track like who's issuing citations, who's not?
We do not see the data down to the the traffic enforcement officer. We would we see it in in aggregate in terms of the number of citations.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. Professional service costs regarding Workday. There are known expenses. I'm just trying to see if I'm missing something. I'm just wondering why they're not budgeted.
So in the Department of Finance, those professional services were those contractual services to supplement payroll were not assumed costs. And so coming out of the Workday implementation, the department was having issues in terms of meeting the the weekly payroll requirements. And so a contract was used to stabilize that staffing level. In the fiscal 25 budget, the council approved creating additional permanent positions in the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services to reduce their reliance on these on this contractual support. What's happened, though, is that the process of bringing on that permanent staff has taken longer. And so they've still had to utilize some of this outside contractual support. So, you know, the department continues to focus on strategies that they can put in place to get out of that contract as soon as possible, while still being able to meet the operational demands of of cutting payroll on a weekly basis.
Can you provide more information about the strategies that you guys are working on?
Yes, we well, you know, I that that's broadly the strategy that's been communicated to me from the from the finance director, but I can request that he give you a more detailed update and timeline.
I would I would appreciate that, Director. How many ARPA funded, how many ARPA funded positions have been transitioned to the general fund? And in what agencies?
So it is our intent to have as few ARPA positions transitioned to the general fund as possible. I the only area that I'm aware of there being funds specifically added to address transitioning ARPA positions are in the area of the Department of Public Works, where we used ARPA funds for one fiscal year to create additional crews for solid waste to get back to weekly recycling. Those funds were those positions were transitioned to the general fund at the start of fiscal 25. The other area is for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Their project plan had funding expiring for a number of their positions at the end of calendar year 2024. And so a portion of those position costs were transitioned to the general fund starting midway through fiscal 25.
Thank you, Councilman. Did you have any questions? Director, thank you. We're going to move on to the Planning Department at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, President. My name is Chris Rahm, the Director of Planning for the City of Baltimore. I'd like to introduce my team, Assistant Director Nicole Stewart and Chief of Policy and Data in the Department of Planning, which staffs the capital budget process. Sarah Parnellum will be making the presentation today. But before she starts, I'd like to remind the committee of really two major tasks that the Planning Department has been undertaking over the over the last two years. And the context for this presentation today. The first was increasing the size of the capital budget. It was woefully woefully under financed and with support from the administration specifically around raising the limits of GO bonds, specifically on the vacant house initiative, and specifically in the three year restoration of HUR funds, which does end after next year. We've come a long way towards increasing the the capital budget to meet the city's both needs for for economic growth and population growth and to address the tremendous backlog of deferred maintenance in the city. At the same time, we entered the the Workday era in financial accounting. And our team has been working very hard at your request to clean up the data in the capital budget so that we can give you an accurate picture of what is happening, particularly with these new income streams. So Sarah can Sarah can give you an update on where we are in that accounting process. And then we can take any questions.
Okay. Before you introduce yourself, I just wanted to acknowledge Councilman Glover, a member of the committee. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Parnellum. I'm the Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis within the Planning Department. And I wanted to start today with an update on the accounting progress that we've made and policy improvements that we're putting in place that serve as a framework for the reporting that we're doing around expenditures in the capital budget. So we have, as as the Director mentioned, been making a lot of progress in terms of the reporting that we're able to do from Workday. You see here with kind of the green light, red light report status that the first several items that we've been working on are complete or nearly complete. So we've spent a lot of energy working with city agencies, working with the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services to correct hierarchies, to correct cost centers, to correct other work tags so that we have accurate data within the Workday system. We've also worked to restore appropriations from prior to 2009 that were missing in the Workday system when we made the transition and therefore were showing inaccurate balances for projects. And we are almost complete with correcting revenue categories. So when we made the transition to Workday, there was a decision made to reduce the number of revenue categories that were used in recording the capital budget. And so multiple different revenue categories were recorded as general fund, even though they were not, in fact, a general fund. And so we've been working with city agencies to to make those corrections so that we have accurate data about the revenue categories within each of our projects. We've been going through that process fund by fund, and we are almost complete. There are two agencies, two large agencies remaining, transportation and housing. And the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services has someone under contract who is working through those revenue category corrections as we speak. So that is almost complete, and I expect that that will be complete by the time we're back before this body. We have also started on the next two efforts in terms of this accounting progress. So we have multiple projects, PRJs, which is how we record project information that are for the same project as you would think of it in terms of an on the ground project. And so we are working on an effort with city agencies to consolidate balances so that we can see the balance for a project all in one place, rather than having to look up information in two or three or four different places to understand the status of the funding for a project. So we have started that process. That will be coming before Planning Commission and the Board of Estimates as we make more progress. Those will show up as large transfers in order to see those balances kind of all in one place for a single project. The other very large effort that we have undertaken is to implement appropriation work tags and funding source rules. Currently, the expenditures for projects are not recorded based on the revenue category. And so this does not allow us to see the balances by revenue category because we're not seeing the expenditures by revenue category. And so this is something that we're putting in place, going back and making a change to how Workday is set up in order to be able to record this information so that we have that information available to be able to report to you and to be able to reallocate balances as needed. So that's something that we were working with Accenture on and now are working on internally with the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services to complete that project with our with our various capital agencies. And then the last piece of this accounting progress will be cleaning up old appropriations. So we know that we have a lot of appropriations that are listed in the Workday system that don't have revenue behind them. We want to go through the process of cleaning up those old appropriations and closing out projects that are completed.
Okay, I'm just gonna I'm gonna just briefly pause you. If we can move through it a little bit quicker. This was sent over ahead of time. So the committee members, they've already reviewed it. So if you're just able to just move through a little bit quicker for us. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'm getting a notice that my battery is low, so that's another sign to go quicker. So I wanted to mention, but but the but the committee has probably already had a chance to read some of the process improvements that we're putting in place as we're working on the upcoming budget cycle for FY '26 and '31. These process improvements will help us to avoid some of the challenges that we have with the older appropriations so that we are having better information as we move forward. And then we're really excited that once the accounting progress is complete, that I mentioned, those different steps that were on that first slide, that we can report project balances by revenue category without using a proxy. So the data that I'm showing you today, the data that I showed you at the last reporting, is using a proxy in order to be able to report on project balances. But once we've completed that accounting progress, we will no longer have to use a proxy, and we will be able to reallocate prior funding according to priorities. And that's what we all are very excited to do. And so my hope is that by this summer, that accounting progress will be complete, and we will be working collectively to reallocate those prior funding appropriations where where it is prudent to do so. We are also planning to revise the transfer process. And so that's another exciting improvement, process improvement that we're taking on this summer and then revising kind of how we collect data to make it easier for everyone to review and use. So I just wanted to mention that we are in CIP season right now. Agencies present to Planning Commission. We have those presentations available on our website as the recordings, as well as the slides. There's a lot of valuable information there. Just want to give a couple of highlights. Because during those presentations, agencies talk about what is under construction and what is recently completed. The Department of Recreation and Parks, for example, has over $120 million of construction either recently completed or in progress, which represents more than 50 capital projects. So there's a lot of things that are happening if you if you look around the city. And it's not limited to recreation and parks. Housing and Community Development had the ribbon cutting for Perkins Square back in October of last year. Department of General Services has completed multiple phases of renovation for this building, taking care of a major safety issue where there were stones that were falling off the building, working on roof replacements. We see lots of capital activity across the city. So as we look at FY '25 appropriations, expenditures and balances, and if we focus on the non-ARPA and non-utility projects, over the years, we have appropriated approximately $4 billion for capital projects that are still open, and more than $2.3 billion has been spent, which leaves approximately 40% of the appropriations remaining. It's important to remember that appropriations are permission to spend, but you also need to have revenue to spend. And so to understand what these appropriation balances mean, we need to understand the type of appropriations that remain, whether there's revenue available, how old the appropriations are, and the status of the projects within remaining balances. And that's what we'll be looking at as we embark on the process to reallocate balances. We looked at these items a little bit during our last quarterly briefing, and they have not really changed substantially. With the revenue category corrections almost complete, we are very close to knowing the type of appropriations that are available for each project. However, until the funding source rules that I spoke about earlier are applied, we won't know the revenue category of the expenditures, and therefore, we don't know the revenue category of the balances. But in the meantime, we can use a proxy for expenditures by revenue category. We can prorate expenditures based on the type of appropriations that are within a project. And if we use a proxy such as this, then it appears that nearly half of the remaining appropriations are federal or state appropriations, which may or may not be usable. We don't know the revenue behind those. Furthermore, if we look at the remaining balances, more than half of that is in projects that received funding since FY '23. So they received funding fairly recently. We wouldn't expect that agencies have spent that yet, and some of those are partially funded projects. If we look at the difference between the close of quarter one and the close of quarter two, we can see that there was $36 million in expenditures and capital projects out of these non-ARPA and non-utility projects during quarter two. And I have highlights for you. I think you've had a chance to look at, you know, some of the projects where we have significant spending during fiscal year '25. And then we've mostly been focused on the non-utilities and the non-ARPA projects, but some of the largest spending is within the utilities. And a lot of our agencies are focused on spending down their ARPA dollars. So we're seeing a lot of spending for those projects as well to meet that timeline. So these are some of the projects that are funded through the utilities and ARPA that have seen significant spending in FY '25. Any questions?
Of course, we're going to start with Council President Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Reyer, this one is for you, and it relates to the Greenway Trail. So we were awarded a million and a half dollars, as I understand it, in fiscal 2022 from the state with the intent to acquire the Norfolk Southern Spur in order to help us build the trail. You and I had a series of conversations about it. I believe that was within your portfolio. We heard from the state in September 2024 that these funds were never requested. And then in October, a delegate asked if we were going to use them because we stood the risk of losing them. And it does now appear that that money has been re-appropriated. So why didn't we request these funds from the state? And is everything I said accurate to your understanding of it? And what do we intend to do about it? Because completing this project is extremely important. And when the state allocates money, whether it's capital or otherwise, it's extremely important that we put it to great use.
Okay, I won't go won't go into the long history of this project. But you are correct. We received one and a half million. We received a $1.5 million grant in the state budget several years ago through a very non-traditional pathway. And it makes up, it's part of a pool of about $5.5 million that we've raised for the trail over the last few years, along with about $2 million of outstanding grants that we have not received response yet on yet. We did the forensic audit on how the money was awarded. And my hope and plan is to go back to the delegation to require that money to be reinstated. We have no rationale at all of why it was withdrawn. So we'll work with the Department of General Services at the state level to understand what happened in that process and the delegation to reinstated.
Was there communication with the delegation in the interim to understand how that money was being allocated and that there could be a penalty of it being revoked if we did not ask for it and then use it?
Yeah, we had no knowledge of that at all. What's happening with the project is that we're going through what we have been through, an onerous NEPA process, because there's a federal earmark in this project also. So it kicks in the NEPA process. That means we cannot talk to the property owner or any of the less E's during the NEPA process. So we have now received our third appraisal for the property. We were very close to being allowed to talk to the railroad, which would kick in conversations with tenants of the railroad, which had a financial interest in this transaction. And then we also had two grant applications and for design funding to establish the construction cost of this. So right now, that's still our plan. If we find out that we are not able to restore the funding, I'm not quite sure how we will restore it, but we'll find another way to restore it. We've been working on this for three, four years now.
Yeah, and again, I'm concerned about the slow pace of this project and the apparent lack of communication with our state partners over these funds. I think it's extremely important that when the state allocates monies, that we effectively use them, particularly as it relates to safety, transportation, livability in our city. So I am, as I know, this committee is paying very close attention to this project, as well as all the other projects that require capital investments. And would ask Director that you follow up quickly with our partners in the state to make sure that money is able to be restored because it is unacceptable to lose any kind of money, particularly on a project like this one. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Director Ryer.
And if I may, I just wanted to note, Nicole Store, Assistant Director of Planning, there have been several staffing shifts with regard to both our fiscal staff and the team that works on the Greenway Trail project. And so that could have also played a part in terms of the miscommunication about being able to draw down these funds. But we currently do have a new fiscal staff person, who are CFO. And we are, we also have now put in place some additional steps so that we will not experience this type of miscommunication again.
Understood, and I appreciate that. And, you know, we are a city that struggles when it comes to multimodal transportation and walkability, and just having this trail network is incredibly important. And the delays and then finding out that we've lost money due to internal, I guess, confusion within an agency, again, is really concerning. So sincerely appreciate that the Planning Department is working to fix its systems so that this never happens again. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Director Ryer, when capital funding is reallocated, who or what is determining or driving that reallocation of funds?
I'll defer to Sarah for full answer. But in general, the capital budget is a six-year program, right? So if one project, there's always a line. I think is the best way to explain it. There's always a project in line if there's available funding because we've always programmed out the budget for five years after the budget year. One of the things we've been trying to work on in the past year is tightening that up. So for example, in this year's capital budget, you had to begin with last year's capital budget. So you had to show if you were adding a project, what you were subtracting from the year before, and what was the rationalization for adding a project that wasn't in last year. So it preserves a greater stability within the process so things don't happen willy-nilly. I think Sarah tried to explain some of the other things we're doing, like fully funding a project in one budget year to prevent agencies from stringing out funding for a project for five years, or even in DOT's case, sometimes 10 years for a bridge project. So that's the short answer. Sarah, do you want to?
Yeah, there are two, from a more technical point of view. There are two ways that funds can be reallocated. It can happen through the annual capital budget process. And so as we're going through the process to prepare the budget for FY '26 through '31, we can make changes to what was allocated previously. You'll see sometimes deappropriations in the capital budget. And so that's reallocating funds that were previously appropriated to another priority. It can also happen through the capital transfer process. And so capital transfers go through review by the Board of Estimates and the Planning Commission. And this is one of the processes that we want to look at over the summer in terms of bringing that into the 21st century. So right now, it doesn't have kind of the right processes in place for the capital transfer process. We want to improve those and also change the order. So the Planning Commission is looking at those transfers first before the Board of Estimates.
So my follow-up is going to tie into a concern by, previous question and concern by the Council President. How are interested parties or impacted parties notified when these reallocations are made?
How are priorities recognized when we allocate?
How are parties, so impacted parties? Impacted parties, people in a project, companies, neighborhoods, councilpeople. And I say that because it's a concern with council members, with our neighborhoods, when plans are made within a capital.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good question. I mean, if it's going to go through the transfer process, it would go through the Planning Commission, and I would hope that our community planners would be in touch with the neighborhoods over that process. The community planners are what connect the Planning Commission actions to the neighborhoods. So if it's something, a community planner should know that it's important from their work with the neighborhood. And if there's a transfer, either negative or positive, that's affecting that project or that community, I would expect them to be the liaison with the neighborhood.
So Council President Cohen's question was regarding the Greenway Trail, right? And a missed opportunity from the state level. But then it was, did we connect with the state? So that wouldn't be the community planner's role, or would it? Was it someone else's role if it's not just the neighborhoods that are impacted?
So if you, so projects that receive state funding are in the capital budget typically. So that process would apply to a state-funded project.
I can add to that.
Thank you.
So in terms of our Greenway Trail project, our planners are our project managers in terms of knowing where projects are, communicating out about them, the way that within the Planning Department, the way we work when we are receiving grants for projects that we are managing, the planners would be the project managers who know on the ground and then communicating with our fiscal team about what those opportunities were and being able to draw down those funds. We did something similar recently with State Center redevelopment. And since there was no specific planner on that, I managed that grant process to be able to draw down those funds from the state. And so the planner, who would have been the point person, particularly on the green trailway, there had just been several staffing changes over the last one or two years. And so that is what contributed to that lack of communication. But it would be the planners who would then know, for instance, this particular item. The planner is the one who brought it to my attention, that our attention, that this is what had happened and what we needed to now do to be able to go forward.
That helped me out a lot more, thank you. I hear some sighs to my right. Councilman Slifer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, so you had mentioned that, you know, it's usually like five to six-year process. And so you've been here through a full cycle. And so how would you overall rate the performance and process of the overall Planning Department in these capital projects and overseeing them and the roles that you guys play? How would you rate that performance?
Yeah, I would say it has changed drastically and about to improve relatively drastically. When I took this position, I had no idea how limited the capital budget was. I had no idea of the amount of resources the city had lost over the last decade, decade and a half. So one of our challenges has been trying to restore those funds. To be perfectly honest, there was so little, I don't call it fat, in the capital budget. Everything was a priority in the capital budget because funding was so limited. So to the point of the community planners, they didn't have a lot of discretion over putting projects in the budget. There simply wasn't room to do that. And when there was, and there are a few in the budget, they watched them like a hawk. This particular example was a community planner that was assigned temporarily to that district, to that neighborhood, and was overseeing the trail network that discovered this issue. So back to your question, I would hope that in the future, with greater resources, we would be able to be more influential on the capital budgeting process in the sense that plans that, whether they're communities or the city, that are implemented can be implemented through the capital budgeting process. I hope those days are coming.
I mean, I hope that they're not coming because if, with the little discretion that you've currently had and oversight over capital projects, we've seen an inconsistent, slow-moving process that I can't find anybody who will say that there's been a consistent process across the board as it relates to capital projects and keeping people in the loops or even any transparency related to them. Each of us, when we have projects within our district, have had to reach out directly to agencies because we don't get answers from the Plan Department. But you have said in your opening that you, there's been drastic changes. So can you tell us some of those high-level changes that you personally have implemented as the leader of the agency? And with that being said, I mean, there are some really talented people within your agency that are high performers in the roles that they play, and they do an excellent job at that. But what I'm discussing is the high-level strategic operational process procedure that I believe is lacking. And so what changes have you made that you're saying has been drastic improvements between five, six years ago and today?
Can I actually start, and then we'll have Director Ryer to jump in with his specific? I want to offer some color here and then allow the Director to jump in with specifics. So I think to the point about having to reach out.
I'm going to pause you, CAO. Can you just state your name?
Oh, absolutely, Faith Leach. Yes, do you mind?
I mean, I actually do mind because, you know, if I'm asking the Director some pretty specific questions about changes that he's made, I think that he should answer those questions. And, you know, this topic was brought up pretty much every single year for the past five, six years, and how are we measuring performance? What improvements have been made? And so the Director stated that there's been some high-level changes and improvements that he's implemented. And so I'd like to know what those are so we can see what that is. And then I'm more than happy to hear anything else, but I'd just like a direct answer to that question.
Absolutely, I'll respond after the Director. Thank you, sir.
I'll give you three or four examples. One, the three-year increase in HUR revenue. Two, the $50 million vacant house initiative. Three, the increase of GO bond borrowing from $80 million a year to $125 million a year. Four, a number of process improvements that Sarah just went over, overwhelmingly related to the Workday transition, which has been a two-year transition. The combination of those things, I believe, is truly transformative of the capital budgeting process.
So you're listing off not specific process pieces, but more project, individual projects, which obviously we can go into detail on that. So how are you measuring, how are you measuring that success that you're talking about? How are you measuring that there's been any change in process procedure effectiveness of the agency over, you know, prior to five years ago?
Well, first of all, I think I'm measuring it in total dollars, which I just went through. And I believe Sarah went through six specific points where we are trying to improve our process and measuring those improvements. So I can hand it back to her to go through that again, if you'd like, or I can leave it there.
Well, in total dollars, I mean, you guys provide support to these projects. And so how are we measuring the effectiveness of that support that's being provided? Because I can give you examples from my own district of capital projects that have stalled, have, you know, disappeared, that have delayed. My colleague to my left, you know, has had the exact same thing in her district. I know others as well. And so I guess I'm trying to understand how you're measuring the effectiveness and consistency across the board of the support you guys are providing. Because there isn't any transparency around that, there's no listing. I mean, we get a quarterly report from ARPA about everything they do. We don't get reports from you guys yet. And so how are you measuring the effectiveness of the overall agency and the support you're providing to getting projects done quicker?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I think it's working. Thank you. So again, Faith Leach, City Administrator. So I actually think that it's helpful to offer some additional color around the entire capital process. So a thing that I want to start with at the top is to acknowledge that the city of Baltimore has a pretty fragmented capital budget process. And what we have done is we have built systems around that fragmented process, for example. But what we are actively doing now is overhauling and reforming the capital budget process. So right now, some of the questions that you're asking are related to project management. The Department of Planning does not. The Department of Planning does not provide direct project management for every single capital project. The Department of Planning also does not lead capital procurement. The Department of Planning also does not lead capital accounting, right? And so when you talk about the full life cycle of a capital project, planning is involved in one portion of that, right? And so what really needs to happen is there needs to be coordination across the system. Many agencies are managing their own capital projects. What we have done through the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development is we've actually built in additional project management capacity because that was lacking. We would fund capital projects and not fully fund capital projects. So the issue that you're mentioning, Madam Chair, around when we potentially defund a project in the notification process, we don't fully fund projects. So because of the fact that we had such a limited capital budget, it would take us four or five years to actually try to fund a rec center. And so what was happening is as we were getting close to being able to fully fund a project, we would take money from another project so that we could finally get this one project that's closer to shovel-ready off the ground. What we are looking to do is to begin to fully fund projects so that we no longer have to take from other projects. But again, these are just overall reforms that we are making to the entire capital budget ecosystem. But going back to the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development point, we, through that office, are providing direct project management to capital projects, to what we have identified to be top-tier, priority-one capital projects. We meet monthly where we have a project review meeting where we talk about whether or not there's a budget gap, if we talk about procurement issues, when something is ready to go out for design, for example. And so I'm happy to actually provide that list of all of the tier-one projects that are managed by the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development. And so again, to my larger point here is that we are talking about a pretty fragmented ecosystem when it comes to capital projects and the, and capital project management. And so what we are looking to do is to completely overhaul and reform that system so that it is not just planning, leading one piece, BAPS and accounting doing another piece. Each agency is responsible for their own capital procurement. Our procurement office isn't even responsible for capital procurement. That means Wreckin' Parks is going out there and they're procuring and putting out for bid their own projects. DPW is doing the same, for example. And so what we are looking to do is to centralize that process so that we can get more consistency like you were asking for, sir.
Thank you very much for that answer, CAO. And, you know, that, that sounds great. And so, you know, I would just say that maybe we should look at transferring some of the budget from the Department of Planning over to these wonderful efforts that, that you're having to, to actually streamline the process of a lot of the work that we thought the planning department would do. And just in closing, because I have to go outside for the press conference, I, you know, my, my whole point here is that every agency that comes before us has some type of metric of success. And we can see what we're getting for those dollars or not getting for those dollars and make improvements. And a lot of wonderful improvements have been made across all agencies, even some of the most struggling agencies. And we've seen that. And you can't have those improvements if you don't have specific metrics of performance and success. And the Department of Planning just doesn't have those. And we face that every single budget year.
Yes. So I would offer that the Department of Planning, like every other agency, has a performance plan where there are metrics in that performance plan. Following this meeting, we'll be sure to provide the members of the committee their performance plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Schleifer, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, CA Leach. You answered a lot of those questions. I think we all can agree that there definitely needs to be some changes with the capital improvement program. And as Councilman Schleifer had mentioned, I think it's a touchy subject really for the whole council. I know in my district, just about every project is a capital improvement project. And I've finished up, I'm finishing up my 18th year, and I still have projects that are not complete. And it gets confusing when, in writing, it says it's a six-year program and it takes much longer to do that. And that's where we have, we're kind of in the middle because we have to explain the delays to our constituency, which is, becomes very difficult, especially in impoverished neighborhoods that, you know, have been waiting for things for many, many, many years. And thank you for bringing up and noting that the problem is miscommunication between really all offices. And that, that happens especially when you're dealing with money. Agencies are going to be fighting over money. But I want to bring up, I think, part of the problem too, and I don't know if there's been discussion for changing, is that we have been following this lower bidder process for a very long time. And I think it's, it's not a good process. Some of the projects that I have experienced in my district have been prolonged because of problems of a lower bidder not being able to perform a task that they found, say, I'll give an example. The fire department will come in and, and will not approve because there's a room that is, has grates on it and so on. And they'll stop the whole project until that room has been. And we're talking about buildings and rooms in the 60s and 70s. And again, that could delay another four or five years. So those are just added pieces to the puzzle. I, I just, and I'm glad that, Sarah, you mentioned that eventually you're going to stop the, I guess, calculating on a proxy basis and get the actual information because that's important in this whole process too, and communicating with the agencies that are actually responsible for the projects. So either one of you can comment.
Yeah, that's correct. We are planning to, to be able to report without using a proxy once we have the funding source rules implemented. We're very excited about that because that will allow for us to reallocate funds to higher priority projects. So we know that there is some funding that has been sitting for many years, as you mentioned, and that, and that funding can be reallocated once we have that information available. In terms of the, the challenges with low bidder, that I think is one of the things in terms of the comprehensive look at the capital budget that the CA mentioned is part of the discussion.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Ryer, Sarantin as well. We're going to, we're done with questions for your agency. We're going to move on to Baltimore City Public Schools.
Thank you.
Is, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. Good morning. My name is Mary Ann Cox. I am the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for City Schools. I am, I would like, okay, is that better? Okay, thank you. I'd like to extend greetings on behalf of Chief Financial Officer Chris Doherty and CEO Dr. Santa Lises to the committee chairwoman, any committee members, city council president, any city school staff members who are here, and of course, our community partners. City Schools understands that there's a valid interest in our financial results and we're happy to provide the information today. So I'm going to do two, three PowerPoints. The first one is the summary of FY 2024 end of year. So when I was here for the last one, the audit had not yet completed. So there are likely some changes with this one. First, I wanted to point out that the reason why we have and all three of the PowerPoints have the same beginning slides. So we won't repeat them for the other, but we present this information as part of the quarterly budget briefings required by our local government. And we are presenting information on the general fund. So for the financial summaries that I do, I will be presenting for general fund only. But of course, the capital projects relate activities in the capital projects fund. So that's a different fund for us. I wanted to acknowledge that City Schools, as an LEA in the state of Maryland, has a different reporting timeline. Our Audit of Basic Financial Statements is due to be submitted to MSDE by 9:30 each year. So these numbers that you're seeing here in this particular PowerPoint are audited ones. They are the results of our final numbers for FY 2024. I also wanted to let you know that we, we have a protocol at City Schools for how we release our financial statements, our financial information. We release the Audit of Basic Financial Statements. We submit it to MSDE by 9:30 each year. We submit to the CEO and provide some governance documents. And the CEO presents it to the board. So the board has all of this information as well. I will say that we should have our Audit of Basic Financial Statements placed on the City Schools website so that anyone could see it. And what we do, once City Schools submits the annual consolidated financial report, or ACFR, then that replaces it on our website. And that is the document you would see if you go looking for the FY 2024 financial results. It is my understanding that the ACFR has been submitted to GFOA and ASBO. So we are in the process of putting that document on the City Schools website. So I will just go through our types of revenue. We receive the bulk of our revenue from the state of Maryland and the city of Baltimore. The state of Maryland provides funding based on funded enrollment and relative wealth. That would be the relative wealth of the city of Baltimore to the rest of the state. So that affects the calculation as well. And also, we have certain student needs that are called out for special funding, such as special ed, English as a second language, you know, the career in college readiness, pre-K, things like that. So you can see here that we, we are very much assured of our state revenue. It's appropriated to us on an annual basis. However, you will see that there is a variance here between what our final budget was and what our actual revenue was. Please be mindful that when we proceed with our budget, we use the latest available numbers that we get from the state. And those would be the preliminary numbers released in January each year. So the numbers for both the state of Maryland and the city of Baltimore would reflect those very early, the first preliminary calculations. So you can see that there's typically a variance. I also want to point out that we also have a, other usual accounting types of variances that we do. We, we do accruals for revenue that we are entitled to. And then, of course, we have the reversals of last year's accruals as well. So they can be plus or minus, but that would help account for the variances that we have. Now, the city of Baltimore revenue, as we all know, is, is required to be the higher of the required local contribution as noted in the MSDE state aid calculations or maintenance of effort, whichever is higher. And in these years, after the Kerwin legislation has kicked in and is being phased in, the required local contribution is higher than the old MOE calculation. So that's what we're funded by. Just going through the other items quickly. Our investment earnings, much like the city of Baltimore, were much higher than what we had anticipated. The, it's my understanding that the treasury rate, the TBO rate hit a high that it hadn't had in since, I think, maybe since the 70s and early 80s. So it was up over 5%, which, you know, greatly enhanced our investment earnings. But it has already started to come down. So we're mindful of that and do not see another year of that magnitude. I also wanted to talk quickly about other revenue. If you look at our financial statements, you can see other revenue is going to be everything that's not called out anywhere else. So other revenue would be intestate revenue, which would be if there are any city of Baltimore residents who die without a will and they cannot locate any relatives, then their estate would go to City Schools. That's state law. We also have non-resident tuition, miscellaneous rent for our school buildings. We have reimbursement agreements, which was over $3 million last year. We have various restitutions that are payable to City Schools. We have tuition reimbursement, school police overtime. And this is where we record the MSA revenue for our general fund reimbursements. And that, that was $4.5 million last year. So that would all go here. And just to call out federal revenue, our federal revenue is basically the ROTCE, E-rate, the IRS subsidy, FEMA. And now a new one, we have the Emergency Connectivity Fund that we got some revenue for, excuse me, for both in '24 and '25. That is, the Emergency Connectivity Fund is meant for specific technology-type expenditures. And it too is administered by USAC, who administers the E-rate. So I, I will note that the other financing sources on the bottom is the amount that was appropriated in our FY 2024 adopted budget and approved by our board and city council. So when we go to our expenditures, again, our reporting requirements are different. City Schools, because we are an LEA in the state of Maryland, we are required to do our reporting by MSDE category. There's an MSDE finance manual that they call the Blue Book that tells us where everything is. And we are audited for, by them to make sure that we place everything in the right location. This allows readers of various LEAs to be looking at the same type of information across the LEAs. So I can go into detail if anyone has any questions about what is in each type. But I assure you, it's to meet the requirements of the MSDE finance manual. And to a large part, it's rather self-explanatory. I do want to point out the capital outlay number of $22.5 million. That is, that includes the $20 million of contribution payments that City Schools makes to MSA for the 21st Century Program. So you will see it here and I'll point out where it is on the next page. Of that $20 million that we pay each year, $10 million of it relates to the City Schools contribution and $10 million is an amount that City Schools pays on behalf of the city of Baltimore. Okay, so the next page is the expenditures by, by object, which is what most people are familiar with. And, and, you know, it just has an understanding that we can discuss much easier than the category. I will point out that salary and wages at plus fringe benefits was budgeted at 70.3% of the total budget. And the actual turned out to be 70.7. So that's pretty close. So even though the salary and wages were, I mean, the salary and wages and fringe were less than what the total budget, the percentage remained the same. And that is, that is good. We pay a lot of attention to our salary and wages and fringe benefits. The other thing I wanted to point out here is that $20 million we spoke about when we were discussing the category. were discussing the category, that is reflected here under utilities and other charges. It really is, it's recorded as an other charge. So that's why that 60, you've got 63.9 million of total expenditures there, and 20 million of that is the contribution for the 21st Century program. One thing I just wanted to point out to you is you see an indirect cost recovery credit to the general fund, budgeted at 6 million, actual at almost 10. I will say that this relates to the COVID grants. The COVID grants, for the most part, in fact, almost all, have ended as of 9:30 2024, so after the first quarter of 2025. So this high level will no longer apply. It's going to drop back to its normal level of more like 4 million, something like that. But we will not see 10 million again. Okay. Okay. And now we go to the next, the next slide, which is what happens when we compare revenue and expenditures at the end of the year? What happens to the money? And you can see what happens to the money there. There's an excess of revenue over expenditures of almost 93 million. And we have the listing of capital-type projects that you can see. So the money is held in the general fund, assigned fund balance. We have a board policy, DIG, as in George. And the CEO, as the board designee, has the authority to place projects in assigned fund balance. And that's, that's what she does after conferring with other cabinet members and offices, then they prioritize the projects that we might be able to make a contribution to. So that's what this is. And every one of these projects listed here of the 93 million will be found in the general fund listing of assigned fund balance. So that's what it's used for. And Cindy Smith or Maureen Gersberg will speak about it more, but this is, this helps us fund gaps and other required projects in the capital fund. So that's what happens to the money. Okay. Are there any questions or comments about FY 2024? Okay.
I have one question.
Sure.
Our adopted budget showed an amount for City Schools at 396,900. It shows a different amount, 396 million within our adopted budget. And there's a difference within your chart of 10.33 million dollars. I'm just trying to get more information about the variance. So can you explain it?
Okay. Could you refer to the exact slide?
Give me one second. It's going to be, one, two, three, four. It's going to be a general fund revenue by sources page. I think it's either page four or page five.
Okay. General fund revenue, yes, what about it?
So our adopted budget showed an amount of 396 million.
Yes.
I just want to know what, could you explain the variance? Is the difference between what we see about 10 million dollars?
Between the very first state aid calculation that we get, and if you've ever seen the packet of information that comes with the state aid calculations, it's probably 25 or 30 pages. And one of the pages is the MSDE required contribution, and another page is the local contribution. So we started with that. So we started with the number in January, but they continued to make revisions through the June one. So that's part of the variance. And I believe that part of the issue too is where we have the retiree health benefits and where they're budgeted and like if, they're not included in MOE, but they are included in the state aid calc. So it's considered a contribution by the city of Baltimore, as it was intended to when we pulled it out. So part of the variance too is going to be, and probably the biggest part of this, is the retiree health benefits. We don't budget separately in revenue, but I believe that the city of Baltimore does.
Vice President Middleton?
Thank you. I have a general question.
Sure.
The council is basically a very result-oriented group of elected officials, and we want to see results in our schools and our community. With the funding that you receive, can you, what, what kind of results do you expect to achieve from the money that you're receiving? Very simple question.
Okay. And I don't know if this is too simple of an answer, but I hope you're aware that City Schools has the funding file of the child. So the child, the revenue that we get, state and local file, follows the requirements of the blueprint that says for every dollar you get, 75 cents of certain types of revenue must go to the individual schools. Okay? And so we are required to do that. I believe that FY 2025 was the base year, and then we are submitting based on that. So we, I don't believe that we have the first full year yet, because 25 is the base year for the 75%.
For 75%. Well, we've been doing.
Yes, we've been doing fair student funding for 10 years.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to say, we've been, so the 75% is what's in the law.
Identify yourself.
Can you hear me?
Identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
That's okay.
Allison Perkins Cohen, Chief of Staff for City Schools. Thank you for the question. We've been complying with the blueprint requires that for most funding streams, the 75% go directly to the schools. Some, like concentrations of poverty, it's 100% with the allowable portion you can take off the top for centralized planning. But each funding stream is specific, and so most of the dollars go there. And, and that has not been, while that's been, what's in the law, we haven't been held accountable for it until, I think it's this year, though we've been doing it every year. We've been meeting the requirement, even though I believe we're the only LEA in the state that has been meeting the requirement, even though it's not actually, we're not accountable to it until this year or next year. But with those dollars, the things that you'll see in schools that have been palpably different in schools are art teachers. So from 2019, I think, to 2020, till this year, the change in the number of art teachers we have in our schools went from 175 to 309, is an example. The investments we've made in Judy centers and to pre-K were outperforming the state in terms of our performance in pre-K. So we are at 53.4% of our kindergarten students ready for kindergarten. The last year, the state, there were state numbers available. Last year, the state chose not to do the KRA test this year. But last year, we have, was last year, and it was 44%. We've also increased at a faster rate than they. So in a three-year period, leading up to last year, we increased 16 percentage points, while the state increased 4 percentage points. You'll see in our AP courses, we have increased by about 33% the number of AP course offerings we have for our young people. We've increased the number of students of color taking those AP courses. We've increased the percentage of those students that are completing AP courses and sitting for exams to about 90%. I think it's 90% for black students, 91% for Latino students, up from, I think, 67% for black and 57% for Latino students. You'll see it in middle school athletics, the kind of programming we're providing there, which we drastically increase the number of students who have access to middle school athletics. You'll see it in the kind of social worker and mental health supports we have for students at wraparound services, guidance counselors. So if you go into our schools, and we welcome you to come anytime, we just did a tour yesterday for the state delegation as the blueprint cuts that are in the governance budget are on the table. We wanted them to see the difference. And it's a palpable difference you see in coaching, in literacy gains, in what the school we were in yesterday, Halliburton, calls essential offerings. So things like art, music, they have a Spanish theater camp. Those kinds of things are things that did not exist in our schools before, though they existed everywhere else in the state.
And each school is keeping actual data for, for all the progress that, that funding is going to be used for.
Yes, we'll have to report on how schools are spending their resources. And then we're also collecting data on the increases like the KRA rates. We just had the third highest increase in eighth grade math, the rates on the nation's report card, double the rate of other large urban districts and quadruple the rate of public schools across the country.
Thank you. Yeah, those things are important to us to help just advocate that, you know, progress is happening. We're here to support you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So as we just get into the next presentations, we appreciate the detail. But in the interest of time, if we can just get to just highlight the critical takeaways.
Okay. The next presentation should be the FY 2025 Quarter 1 financial results. So I'll try to go through this quickly. I will note that you can see a variance from what you might expect when you say, oh, year to date September, that's a quarter of the year, we ought to have three quarters of the money left. But that's not how it works for the state of Maryland funding. We get payments primarily six times a year. So it starts with the end of July, then it goes the end of September, November, and so forth. So when we are reporting for a year-to-date September, we have received one-third of the revenue for the year from the state of Maryland. I just want to note also that our timeline, our revenue timeline from the city of Baltimore is also different. They send us money twice a month for 12 months of the year, which is pretty much how we spend it. So that's more likened to how we spend it. Federal revenue is unpredictable. It can come anytime. The 99,000 you see there is ROTCE money. That's all it is. So, and the 22,508 of other financing sources is the amount that was approved for, in the FY 2025 approved budget. So I just want you to understand that you're going to see this slight imbalance between our revenue and our expenditures for the funding timeline, that we get our money from the state, which is the largest revenue component we have. So for the next one, again, we have expenditures by category, same items, same comments as before. You can see that we are required to report this, and this is what you're going to find in our financial statements as well. We report according to the requirements of the MSDE finance manual, or they call it the Blue Book. So again, I just want to note that of the capital outlay amount of 22.2 million, 20 million of that is a contribution by City Schools for the 21st Century program. Okay, going to the next one, which is expenditures by object. I just want to bring one thing that will also help explain the imbalance. Please remember that year-to-date September includes our summer school programs for the months of July and August, and even the beginning of September, and one month of regular school. So our salary and benefits expenditures are lower than you would expect proportionally because of the way we record. Most of our teachers are not on the pay all year, but they have the option to do so. And if they are nine-month employees and get paid over nine months, they are paid over 21.6 pay periods per year, as opposed to 26 pay periods a year if you're pay all year for 12 months. So that can skew the proportions that we would be reporting here, because when I looked at the total of salary and benefits in budget, the percentage of total was 76.7%. And we're down below 70% for actual, and that's because of, you know, the way our workforce works throughout the year, summer school versus just one year of, of the regular school year costs. So going to the next one, we, we updated the presentation of the information here. Just more of a summary page. I do want to point out that we have the middle column that says year-to-date September 2024, revenue and expenditures. That amount, the revenue, this has nothing to do with encumbrances or anything. This is just a match of revenue to expenditures. And you can see that we have an excess of revenue over expenditures of 189.5 million. And this is largely driven by the fact that the way we get our state funding, you know, at this point, we would have received a third of it. And we certainly didn't incur one-third of our expenditures. So it has to do with the way the school year plays out. Okay, that's that one. And then we have the next one, which is FY 2025 Quarter 2, year-to-date as of December 31st. I will say that there are certain numbers that are not yet reflected in here because of the way we had to pull the data to, to present this. But we would expect that there would be some additional impacts of indirect cost recovery from the grants and things like that. But the numbers should, the percentages shouldn't change that much. So I just want to point out again that our funding sources differ from the city in that we're assured of our state and local money. So we, we don't generate it ourselves. It's generated on the basis of the funding formulas from the state. Federal revenue is unpredictable. When I look at the amount year-to-date December, I will tell you that the amounts that are in there are primarily from the emergency connectivity fund related to the technology expenditures and some ROTCE numbers. And of course, the 22.5 million and other financing sources relates to the FY 2025 adopted budget. So again, we go to categories. Again, we report that on the basis of the Blue Book from the MSDE finance manual. We are required by Calmar to both report it that way and to report it that way in our financial statements as well. So we, City Schools, are reporting our monthly transactions to MSDE, and they are too, are trying to evaluate the impact of the blueprint money and is it doing what we thought and that. So again, this is our first year for, I think, for setting the base year, so we're still working on it. So that's that one. And what I wanted to point out in the very last page, although I guess I could, and much to be expected, year-to-date December, salary and benefits are running at 73% versus 76.7% budgeted. And it's a smoothing of having our employees being charged for expenditures, again, the nine-month versus 12-month employees. So that will smooth itself out as we go through the fiscal year. So one other thing that I wanted to point out on the next page is the, it's the summary of general fund revenues and expenditures. It says that just, just looking at revenue and expenditures, a year-to-date December, the excess of revenue over expenditures is 161.7 million, down from 189.5 million for the first quarter. So you can see the way the state funds us, they kind of preload it in the early months, and then we spend it down as we go through the rest of the year. So are there any other questions or any other information we might provide?
I have one question. This one's around the community services. The community service. I have one question. This one regarding community services. The community services.
What are you looking for?
Well, I'm looking at Q1 and Q2, so I'm looking at both presentations. This may be your page five on both.
Okay, I will say that the general fund does not record much community services expenditures. A lot of it is on our grants. So I could confirm what the amount is for our grants and provide those numbers to you if you'd like.
Can you do that? Because what I'm interested in is just that it was budgeted for $487,000 in FY 24, and I'm on page five of your Q1 and Q2.
Page five, okay.
But I'm not showing, I'm just interested in why it's budgeted at zero now.
Yeah, there was $487,000 appropriated and only 36 expended, and I believe that some of it was transferred to the grants, if it met the criteria of a grant, but I will find out the number is much larger on the grants, and I will get that information for you.
We would appreciate it. Thank you. Members, did you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I have another one that sticks out. With all the things that are going on with the federal government, and, you know, we are considered a welcoming city, and we have, the school system has worked hard to hire international teachers to, you know, help with their, how is that going to be an impact or is there an update with?
Okay, is Allison here?
With that?
Allison left. We can get that information for you. We are aware of that ourselves, you know, and that a lot of the increases over the past couple of years have come from people of, you know, people who have come to the city of Baltimore for those very attributes you discuss. So the question is, what's going to happen? I don't think we know, but I believe that there might be some steps planned that we might have developed internally, and we will get those to you.
Okay. And then I guess one more question. Are there any improvements with students for our, for math performance, increase in math performance? Any extra funding going to that, or are we investing any more for those improvements?
Hi, Councilwoman. Melissa Broom, Legislative Affairs for City Schools. In the Chief of Staff's absence, I'll just answer that. Just last week, we received word that on the nation's report card, our city schools' fourth graders saw the third-largest growth in the country among similar-sized districts for, and I believe that that was for math. So we would be glad to get you more of those specifics, but I appreciate the question and the chance to demonstrate that the funds, the support we have received since the passage of the blueprint is making a difference, and this is, would not be the time to pull back on those investments.
Thank you. I know that we have one more. We have our capital presentations you guys are going to do whenever you're ready.
Yep. So, good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Cindy Smith. I'm the Executive Director for Facilities Planning, Design, and Construction at City Schools. Our COO, Dr. Washington, sends her regrets that she wasn't able to make it to do this introduction, but Maureen Gershberg will be actually doing our presentation and will introduce herself in a minute, but I just want to express our thank you for our local capital funding allocation every year and to stress how important that is for us. It is very separate from the 21st Century Buildings Program and the Bill to Learn Funds that we have been receiving. It's our city capital allocation supports our state capital projects, such as like the replacement of Furley, which is not a 21st Century program, as well as the much-needed systemic HVAC projects, elevator projects, roof projects, things like that, that otherwise those 21st Century and Bill to Learn Funds, you know, do not provide. So, you know, this local allocation is extremely important to us. And I'll turn it over to Maureen.
Thank you. Moisa, are you driven? Yep. All right. So my name is Maureen Gershberg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Strategy for Baltimore City Public Schools, and today we'll be going over the FY 26 Capital Improvement Program as well as giving an update on our major projects. Skip this one. These are the topics that we'll be covering today, and we always liked, I keep going, sorry. Yep. And we always like to start any presentation involving capital funding, showing what the industry standards are for capital and maintenance for a district of our size. And when you look at what those industry standards are, we receive $375 million less than what is needed annually. We know we're underfunded, but that also means that we have very tough decisions to make when we look at deferred maintenance, space needed, all those capital facility decisions. Next. So capital decisions are informed by both physical system conditions and district priorities. So when we develop the list of projects that are needed, we look at the life cycle, we look at work orders, we look at how well utilized a facility is, but we also layer in more kind of like the district priorities, such as what our long-term plans are, where is projected growth going to be, again, what are just district priorities and initiatives such as wholeness and the blueprint. So we meld those factors together to make decisions about what our facility requests will be. Next slide. So this is a snapshot of what our anticipated FY 26 capital funding is. So we anticipate $45 million in healthy schools funds, and that will be going towards systemic projects like roofs and windows. We anticipate about 25, I think, about $26 million from the state, and those will actually be going towards our major projects that I'll go into shortly. And then there's the city CIP as well, which has increased from the prior $19 million up to $27.5 million. And as Cindy said, this funding, this dependent annual funding that we rely on is different than the one-time funding associated with Bill to Learn and 21st Century. It helps us kind of develop that long-term plan since they are continuous funding sources. One thing I do want to note is that healthy schools is, we were previously guaranteed about $45 million each year, but as part of the new laws and designated funding coming online, we're no longer going to be guaranteed that $45 million. They anticipate there is some amount still coming to us, but we don't, it's not guaranteed the way it was historically. So that is something that we'll be figuring out as time goes on. Next slide. So we submit the CIP in fall because it has to align with state deadlines. We don't actually know the final amounts until May or June. So the state has made, they're about 90% of the way there in terms of determining how much funding goes towards our projects and all the other LAs as well. And again, we anticipate to be about $26 million, but we will not know the final amount until May or April. Okay. So I've mentioned healthy schools, and again, that's a specific pot of funding that we've been able to apply towards systemic projects. So there's major projects like replacements and additions, and then there's systemic projects like new roofs, windows, doors, HVAC. And so healthy schools has been really crucial in helping us address those systemic projects, especially when you consider that a lot of our CIP funding is going towards our major projects that have received prior funding. And it's hard to see on this slide, but the total amount that we've received in healthy schools since FY 20 is actually on par with the amount that we've received in CIP funding. Next slide. So every year, we make a lot of requests to the states because our need is so great. We never actually get funded for all of them, but the need is there, and we do like to demonstrate that. And so you can see here the total number of projects that we requested, and if we continue on, you'll see the only projects we actually got funding for this year were three projects that had received prior funding. So on the far right-hand column of those, of that short list of projects, you can see the request amount, but then what was ultimately funded. And you can see right now at the 90% benchmark for IAC funding, we've only, we'll be receiving about $26.6 million this year in CIP funding from the state. Next slide. This is just a map showing our major projects from the beginning of the 21st Century Buildings Plan around then up to now. Keep going. So there's two changes from last year's CIP to this year's that are from projects that we had requested previously, Edmondson and Ben Franklin. For these projects, given the limited funding that we have, we chose to step back. So in the ideal world, when a building needs an addition or needs updating, we can say, all right, this is a major project that's in the queue. We don't have enough money, and we know just long-term, given all the other projects that are in the queue, we're not going to be getting that. And so for both Ben Franklin and Edmondson, we scaled back a project from a full renovation addition to systemics and at Ben Franklin additional space. So Ben Franklin will be kind of doing some select updates, and then we'll be putting a two-story modular on the site because that's an area of the city where we've seen significant overcrowding associated with our Latino demographic, which is growing. Next slide. And then Edmondson, they don't need necessarily more seats, but they're currently in two buildings, so the work that we are proposing will allow them to at least consolidate to one building and provide some updates to the facility which hasn't seen updates since it was constructed in the 60s. So last year, we were proposing much more ambitious plans for those two projects. We have scaled it back this year. Next slide. All right. And then just a quick summary of our major projects. Furley is a new building coming online this summer. Marigi Faring has an early learning annex coming online this summer, and a two-story modular coming online January 26. Northeast, that is not a replacement, it's a limited renovation, new systems and finishes, that'll be September 26. Next slide. We are proposing replacing a one-story portable at Lakeland with a two-story modular to help accommodate overutilization, which again is associated with the growing Latino demographic that we're seeing in that part of the city. Frederick Douglas Campus should be completed in August 26, and that'll host Frederick Douglas and Joseph Briscoe. Commodore John Rogers, new building, will come online January 27. Next slide. Armistead Gardens is a renovation addition coming online August 27. City College, they are swinging to University of Baltimore this summer, and they're building, the renovation and minor addition is due to be complete August 28. City Springs is slated to be complete January 28. Western and Poly, we just kicked off the design for that. Western's renovations will be complete August 28. Poly's will be complete 2030. Ben Franklin, as I mentioned, we're, that's still subject to funding. We weren't funded this year, so we'll be keeping it in the queue, but that's going to be that two-story modular and then some minor renovations at that building. Edmondson, we're, again, going to be consolidating from the current two buildings to one building, but we also were not funded for that either. Next slide. We do have two replacement buildings that have, that do have funding that will be net zero as part of some MEA grants that we have received. And that's picture of Furley right there from actually a while ago. It's, again, almost complete. Next slide. As of June 1, 2024, all classrooms have had some form of AC. We know that's a hot topic, but we have some form in all of our classrooms, whether it's temporary window units, the less temporary VPU's, or the final solution of central HVAC. Some, all of our schools are somewhere along that line. All right. And so this slide summarizes our request to the state and also from the city. We know we're not getting $172 million from the state, but that's what the request was. And then we also have our BTL funds that we're requesting as well. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Members, do we have any questions regarding the capital side for BCPS? You good? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For all of your presentations. I'm going to go ahead and recess this particular hearing, and we're going to go into Legislative Oversight 25-0002, American Rescue Plan Act ARPA for the purpose calling for quarterly financial oversight hearings regarding the management, dispersment, and status of $641 million in federal funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal relief funds to the city of Baltimore. Director Kearney, you have the floor at this time for your presentation, and thanks so much for your patience.
Do we need some assistance bringing the PowerPoint up? You got it? Presentation mode. Okay. I'll start by asking for a little bit of grace as I'm fighting a cold, so hopefully I don't sound too bad. Good afternoon, President Cohen, Chair McCray, Vice President Middleton, members of the council. My name is Shamaya Kearney, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the Chief Recovery Officer for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. Today, I'm joined by my fellow team members who will introduce themselves if they need to respond to any inquiries that you may have. If we could move to slide two, please. I first like to remind the members of the council and the public where they can find factual information on the city's American Rescue Plan Act-funded projects. Slide two. Yep. Please visit our website at arpa.baltimorecity.gov or follow Recover Be More on LinkedIn, YouTube, X, Threads, Instagram, and Blue Sky, again, for factual and correct information on American Rescue Plan Act-funded projects. As you know, the deadline to fully obligate all American Rescue Plan Act state and local fiscal recovery funds was December 31, 2024. As shared in our public reports submitted to the U.S. Treasury as acquired on January 31, 2025, all $641,170, I'm sorry, $641,170,126 awarded to Baltimore City has been fully obligated. This milestone could not have been met without the hard work and dedication of the Recovery Office team. At this time, I wish to thank this amazing team of public servants that I have the honor and privilege to lead and work with. And as always, what I say to you is that in the end, our work will speak for us. I also wish to thank our partners who have diligently worked to assist the city in recovering from the health and economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Recovery Office will now shift and continue its work on meeting the statutory expenditure deadline of December 31, 2026. As of December 31, 2024, a total of $391.3 million has been expended, which includes increased expenditures of $75.2 million since I last stood before the council in October 2024, nearly four months ago. Next slide, please. I'll now provide an overview of expenditures by organization and more detailed information for specific organizations that have expended less than 50% of its allocation. Next slide, please. The next two slides show an overview of obligations and expenditures by city agency. You'll note that there are few agencies that have minimal to no spend, and we'll cover those in more detailed, in more detailed information in subsequent those more detailed, and more detailed information in subsequent slides. Next slide. In total, agencies have expended about 56% of the total obligated funds to city agencies. Next slide. Our quasi-government and nonprofits have expended nearly 78% of total obligated funds. In general, limited spend for some organizations are attributed to capital projects or recent execution of grant agreements. Next slide. Next slide. This provide, this slide provides an overview of organizations that have expended less than 50%. And again, I'll provide detailed information about some of the challenges or reasons and rationale for that spend. For DGS, DGS is administering several projects on behalf of other city agencies to include DPW, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. Of these projects, the lowest spend is for Fire Department facility improvements at 6% and HVAC repairs at Pratt Libraries at 10% and city facility improvements, which include the City Hall roof and Northwest Action Center at 18% spend. For the Fire Department, low spend is attributed to some challenges with permitting, which are now mostly resolved. In addition, contractors invoice at the completion of the project, which impacts spend data. DGS anticipates that all BCFD facility improvements will be completed by June 2026, with the vast majority completed in 2025. There was also a delayed start with the contractor for HVAC repairs at Pratt Libraries. However, DGS is still optimistic that repairs will be completed by late fall 2025. Facility, city facility improvements, today, all expended funds are for the Northwest Action Center, and the work is substantially completed. The notice to proceed for the City Hall roof was issued in late December of last year, and work is expected to be completed by the end of 2026. For DPW, the agency is nearly at 50% spend. A substantial amount of the allocation is directed towards fleet purchases, and spend will show as vehicles are delivered. For the Department of Transportation, that allocation is mostly for sidewalk repair and ADA ramps. Low spend is attributed to delays in contract award due to bid extensions as well as protests. However, notices to proceed have been issued, and work will restart when the temperature is warmer. For the Fire Department, this reflects the allocation for equipment purchases. Spend will show as equipment is delivered. However, I am pleased to note that about $2.5 million in spend occurred in January, and we expect for this information to be demonstrated and reflected in the council report that we submit in February, right at the end of this month. For BCRP, a majority of these funds are allocated for capital projects to include recreation centers. The Gardenville Recreation Center is on schedule for completion by the end of calendar year 2025. About $3.8 billion has been spent, representing 22% of that budget. The Elijah Cummings Recreation Center was awarded in January 2025, which represents about $6.5 million in funding, though there is no spend to date. And the Bocheck Recreation Center was awarded in November 2024. That represents $2.1 billion in spend with no spend to date. Greater Model Pool construction began in December 2024, and 7% of its budget, which is, represents about $577,000, has been spent. The Tamanda and Coldstream Pool, 41% spend to date, which represents about $4.9 million of the $14.6 million spent. For the Office of Performance and Innovation, this represents an additional $500,000 that was added to the budget for the development of a data warehouse to help eliminate the reliance of external vendors and proprietary platforms for data storage for the city's data. For BCPSS, low spend is primarily attributed to building design services. The bids for City Springs and Edmondson High School were received in December 2024, with the goal of making those awards in March of 2025. For BCF or the Baltimore Civic Fund, an agreement, the agreement received Board of Estimates approval in December 2024, with the first half of those funds dispersed to the organization in January 2025, which will appear in the February 2025 Council Report. This also includes $500,000 for the second round of artist relief grants and $1.6 million for Artscape. For Enoch Pratt, low spend is attributed to delays with branch renovation work. There's an effort to combine the renovations as well as the HVAC repair to minimize disruption to community due to branch closures while work is being conducted. So Enoch Pratt and DGS are in sync and working through some of those scheduling challenges. For Visit Baltimore, there's no spend. The agreement was executed in December 2024, with initial dispersment made to the organization in January 2025. Those funds will be used to launch the Tourism and Convention Opportunity Fund and to increase marketing efforts. If you go to the next slide, that includes my presentation. Happy to respond to any questions you may have at this time. Director Kearney, can you just speak to how we're ensuring that these funds are going to be spent by that, um, final deadline? Well, that's the whole purpose of our office, and we are staying on top of those things. So as I noted, there's been $391.3 billion expended as of the end of calendar year 24. We have a very robust monetary mechanism to ensure that we are working and talking with all of our funded partners to make sure that if they are having challenges, that we're aware of those things ahead of time. We have very detailed meetings with all of our funded projects. The project managers meet with most of our funded entities at least once a month. We also have ad hoc meetings where our partners can let us know if they are having any challenges. And we have a routine reconciliation with our accountants that are housed in the Recovery Office to identify if there are any challenges in any of the data that's being reported to us regarding expenditures. We've also prepared some projections to identify if we think that there may be some challenges with underspend, so that we can talk with those organizations ahead of time and identify if there are opportunities for reallocation within the scope of work that they presented as a part of their proposals, or if we may need to move those funds to some other purpose to make sure that we get the funds expended by the statutory deadline. Committee members, do we have any additional questions for Director Kearney? Vice President Middleton, and then
Just a quick, um, so you can move money if the, the allocation wasn't spent and, and you did, you had the ad hoc meetings and so on, you can move it to another place?
So they are very limited circumstances in which we're able to reallocate funds post the obligation deadline. The Treasury guidance is very specific that funds either need to be used for the same or similar purpose, or only if there's an issue of noncompliance. For example, if we were to contract for a good and service and that provider or vendor is no longer able to provide that good or service within the statutory deadline, then we would have an avenue to be able to reallocate funds. But again, it's very limited circumstances in which we will be able to reallocate dollars at this point.
Thank you. That you were given a lot of money to, um, uh, really stay accountable for, and, um, you know, as we go through audits and so on, and you've done a very good job with that. So I, I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to second that as well. You've done an amazing job overseeing the funds and making sure that things were, everything is obligated by the deadline. My question has to do with making sure that the spending is there and with the volatility of our federal government, with tariffs, with all of these, with all the uncertainty. Do you guys have a contingency plan, especially when it comes to construction? We know that there are just regular delays when it comes to construction, but with tariffs and just the overall increase of pricing that will occur across the board, do you have a contingency plan as far as making sure all projects are completed versus the influx of, of expenditures and the cost of things?
So the, the Recovery Office itself doesn't necessarily have contingency, contingency plans, but we are certainly working with the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development as where, as the City Administrator's Office and our planning department to ensure that we are keeping track of where we are in progress with some of our capital projects. I think it's fair to say that January 20th and forward has identified that we need to expect the unexpected. And so we're trying very diligently to figure out what we can do in those situations. I'll be candid that obviously if we start to have an escalation in costs related to construction, that is going to pose a challenge for many of our capital projects, especially if there are any that have other federal funds that are braided in, that could be a challenge. For ARPA, we do not have a drawdown. All of those dollars are already in the city's coffers, so we don't face the same challenges that some other city agencies have where, you know, there was a, a pause on, on drawing down, or there are potentially some challenges that could come along with drawdowns moving forward. But we certainly will have some challenges if we have continued issues with drawing down dollars, or if we see an escalation in costs. So we're, we're having those conversations, but, um, you know, not a plan to date.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director. Um, just, what's the, what was the lesson learned from going through this ARPA process?
Well, you guys have already been here for a while, so I won't hold you long. I have lots of, of thoughts about that. But I think one of the things that we could think about is ensuring that we have processes for emergency funding. We need something that's in between emergency procurement versus our regular procurement process that would allow us to have kind of off-the-shelf tools that are available to us to be able to move dollars more quickly. Certainly, the, the BOE process does in some cases lengthen the amount of time that we're able to execute contracts. So if we're able to have something that, again, is just already off the shelf that the council and the administration agree to, that as soon as we receive federal funds that have, that are time-bound, that we can just implement those protocols and procedures immediately. Also, I think there's some thoughts around how we engage and utilize our nonprofit community. I think one of the things, and you have asked questions about this in previous hearings, about our nonprofit community is ensuring that they have the internal controls that are needed to be able to properly manage federal funds. It is not easy. And so ensuring that if we're going to continue to use our nonprofits to help us provide programs and services, that we are providing them with the necessary tools to be able to do so. Again, about internal controls, everything from accounting to, to time management, time sheets, to travel policies. There's a litany of things that organizations need to have if they're going to manage federal funds. And so working to figure out how best to empower our nonprofit community is probably another place that I think we, um, we could provide some assistance, but also balancing that with understanding what is our role as a government and making sure that that happens. We don't want to create dependencies on the government for our nonprofit sustainability. Obviously, with all the challenges that we're seeing at the federal, state, and local level, we're not always going to be in a position to be able to provide a hand to our nonprofits if we continue to have the kind of fiscal challenges that we're seeing. So starting to also help our organizations think more thoughtfully about their sustainability plans, because there might not always be a pot of funding that they can come to from the government.
Thank you for that. I, I ask in part because, as the Chair and I have been discussing, we are about to see another influx of significant funding from the pharmaceutical lawsuits, perhaps less restricted than managing federal ARPA funds, but still with a series of challenges and opportunities as well. Just to cap the first part of what you were saying, I heard more of an off-the-shelf approach that would expedite some grants and perhaps circumvent the Board of Estimates. Could you say a little bit more on that?
Yeah. So not, not necessarily circumvent the Board of Estimates, but I'm suggesting that for time-bound funds, like with ARPA, we had to obligate in three years, hit the fully expend in five. In some cases, it takes us between six to eight weeks to get something on the BOE agenda, which impacts the amount of time when you have time-bound funds and you're able to execute a contract, which means that's also taking away from the time that we have to deliver programs and services. So it's not necessarily about circumventing BOE, but it is thinking about what are some tools that we can put in place that we don't have to go to an emergency procurement, which is typically the default for organize, our agencies that are looking to try to start to spend as quickly as possible when they do have time-bound funds, versus our regular process that we know can, can sometimes take a couple of months. And then if there's a deferral, that could be additional time. So just thinking about some agreed-upon tools that we can, that we can agree upon now, so that when those funds come, we already know that there's just kind of a switch that we can click that says these are the protocols and rules that we're going to put in place for this amount of funding or for this pot of funding.
Thank you, Director. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director. Um, thank you for your time. Thank you for your presentation. We always appreciate having you here. This legislative oversight hearing is now in recess. Thank you. Everyone, have a great day.